Okay, we're gonna call this regular council meeting to order Monday, August 4th, 2025, 5:00 PM.
Recording in progress.
Um, with, uh, please turn your cellphones off or turn them down, and we'll have a roll call, please.
Mr. Rayland.
Here.
Mr. Hickerson.
Here.
Mr. Morris.
Here.
Mr. Perez.
Here.
Here's, please stand. Please, please, please. Please, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don isn't here, so Tracey, you handling this?
Lord, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for the good things that happen in this city, and we pray that your blessings would be upon the city, upon the residents, and upon the council as they make the determinations and the decisions for this, for this city in Jesus' name.
Okay, um, we get approval of the agenda, I get a motion, please?
So, say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Okay, um, I'm gonna have public comment here, but first I'm gonna remind everybody that this is a, this is a meeting sanctioned by the state of Illinois, and we request that everybody be on their best behavior while you're here, and if, when you give a public comment, you'll give your name, we'll ask you to stand, give your name, you get three minutes, it's not up for discussion, just you say what you want, and as long as it's uh, you know, good taste, and then we'll move on to the next person. Okay, if you wanna public comment now, please raise your hand, I'll call on you. Um, yes ma'am?
I just wanna start by saying thank you to those.
Name?
Oh, DM you. I just wanna start by saying thank you to those that am on the station and for the cheaper juice that is left dealing with problem of well. South Polloy is paying millions of dollars every year, so far we've paid $489,720 just for the, had the last year, and for 2025, we're paying $1,808,823, their number continues to go up. The contract was for three people, not in three people, but total, it's eight, 297 two people. We had one full-time employee and 29 paid on call. I grant, now I know not all paid on call people show up, I understand that. The on calls were given from, to be hired by town of Lloyd, but they waited to pay on call, except five years ago, however, I feel that the paid on call certainly could be helpful at this moment. Our equipment, our trucks, our ambulance, for millions of dollars for two people. The contract has not been held up, they, um, held up, they not held up their end of contract. Getting dispatched, you would rate account has been a big part, though I will say that that is my degree plus on our end, especially for the staff. It is one year, and we still have two people. Simon said they just sleep better at night, Simon is wrong, we are not sleeping better at night, we are planning, we make sure we have backup fire extinguishers, um, cannot always rely on Lloyd, because it's summertime, and it's crazy there, Rockton, Harlow, they're on the baby, every day is different, and the fire department, we never know what they're doing, they are not to be relied on on a rainy day for a fire truck. We have to rely on ourselves for a fire truck or a backup, um, just two to, every day is different, and that's the best part about being in that field. So we need to have a fire truck, full staff, we were told we'd have up to nine people for this article. We do not have nine people, we don't even have close to a week two.
Thank you. Next? Yes, sir?
Uh, Mike Liamfear, question, does the contract between the township and the South Polloy have a performance bond, or an areas and emissions policy, is there any kind of policy insurance laws?
It's not a question, it's not a question and answer, you're allowed three minutes to speak your mind, but you can't ask this question.
Okay, so I'll fill your request in. And, uh, what's going on with a complaint filed with you against our police chief for our officer that's on the tape out here on Fisher Road letting his neighbor run a commercial business with no driver's license and turned a blind eye to that? You have now been reported to the governor's office over that, since we met last time, you refusing to do your job as the mayor now here, I believe that we need to hold the election and simply get you out of here, it's that simple. I'm off for starting it and getting it going, my name's Mike Liamfear, on the Corgeo Court of Loma Home Park up here, I have over a hundred tenants that are not interested in tolerating impick and issues of new disprotection under the Constitution. My tenants wanna start a class action lawsuit and see if South Polloy can financially survive that and try and prevent that. So, can you comment on that by chance, since you're not willing to make the police chief do his job and regulate his officers not following their oath or the laws of this state?
This is a public comment, we can't.
Yeah, I understand, it's my three minutes, can I use them, you can have the next.
I'll give you three seconds.
That's my first amendment, protect the right, I do this every board.
Please add three seconds, add six, add six seconds.
Probably add thirty, since he's pulling this. Your turn, Mr. Carroll.
You done?
That would, your turn, indicate I'm done.
If your three minutes are done, then sit down, please.
Absolutely.
First of all, you're, you're trailer parking, you are not in South Polloy.
I'm in your police map, hold up the police district map over the city map, you'll see I'm within your police.
You asked me to answer, that's it.
Please stop making stories and just do your job, we gave you.
We asked you to be quiet now.
Let us just do that.
I'll give you one warning to be quiet, second warning, you'll be asked to leave. Okay, next. Hyla?
Hyla Tender, I'll try to use my three minutes the best I can, I know sometimes I go on time, I'm pretty upset about this. On July 23rd, fire alarm went in to the fire department that there was a fire at Carroll's. The alarm went in at 10 o'clock, there was a response at 10:17, the hall had been evacuated, and the majority of the residents were out there. The thing that really frustrates me is no fire truck ever showed up, the ambulance did show up, was smoking, could not drive, and had to sit there and be towed away. Now, maybe this doesn't affect any of you people here, but my son lives there, I have friends that are there. To me, this is 120% unacceptable, that we don't have a fire truck that can respond. When the administrator asked them what took them so long, there was nobody at the credit card, I guess. So this is 10 o'clock in the morning, I don't know how you people cannot, maybe you have no family, no one that you care about that's there, but another thing to think about is, what if that goes off in the middle of the night, and there's probably four to six people there working, and there's a fire, and they're gonna try to evacuate all these people, and can't even get a fire truck there? Plus, we have what, four schools in this city? If there's ever a fire, somebody's gonna lose their life, because you cannot evacuate a building in that short a time. But 17 minutes, to me, is unacceptable for no one to come, and then when they do, it wasn't a fire, what happened was they was doing some painting in the room, and it set off the fire alarm, which automatically goes to the fire department, but when they got there, they had finally figured out, I guess, what was going on, I was down the hall on another wing, but I just wanna state that I, I think this is something that the few of you should not have made up your mind as to what our fire department does or doesn't do. I think that should have been a meeting where everyone come and was able to discuss it. Now, many years ago, when I come to many meetings here, they had a, a meeting once in a while, and the council was not ran like this, you could speak to the council, they would answer, but having said that, there's never a meeting so that you can come and just give your opinion, and it was called a meeting of the whole, and you could go and stay what you wanted to, and I think town, you attended those meetings as well, but we were here at every meeting, I was here at every meeting, 20 years, twice a month, so I'm pretty well educated on our council and our way of, um, it, it does its business, but I just wanna say, you need to investigate that issue, because, and again, we have said about.
We noted it, we noted it, we will, and as far as a meeting of the whole, the last time we had a meeting of the whole was, uh, I had it on Saturday morning, and I had it between eight and 11, I think it was eight and 11, and the only person that showed up was Randy, right there, he was the only person that showed up, and Sonia and I sat there for three hours and waited for somebody to come in, and so I said, we'll have another meeting of the whole when we can get more interest. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Josh Lloyd, glad we're here today, I hope this is the start to an end of this, but I wanna take us back to the journey, because 13 months ago, we told you to have nine people staffed, and like I was talking about, there's calls going out, the town of Lloyd can't even respond to them, because they don't have a staff, which concerns me, because we're leaning on them too hard, we're leaning on everybody else when what we need to do is better management here. I brought up the list last time, it wasn't to say it was stolen, but how would you know if it was stolen, if you don't have an accurate list? We need better management of these things, you know? One of the calls, I don't know if it's one I was talking about or not, the dispatch took a very long time, someone here needs to manage that, I think it's the community's understanding that all of you manage that, that wasn't, that wasn't what I thought coming in here, but now that I know their expectations, I have to agree, we need to do something different, and the last meeting of the whole that I knew about was the sewer study, there was only three people, if you wanna call it that, and then the fire alarm that was complete garbage, it was complete garbage, you didn't get anything from the people on that. We need better management, no matter what they say tonight, and I hope what they say, if they, if they came to conclusions based on interviews, I hope they say who they ask questions to, because that needs to be transparent, I don't think we're fully staffed, I don't think we're in a good position, and I don't think the town does either, so I'm asking for better management of the situation.
Anybody else? All right, I gotta, I'm gonna make a public comment, because I live here too, and, and I don't like paying higher taxes, and I don't like paying for higher sewer, sewer water rates, but I pay it because I live here. And, uh, we have, we've had, when, three websites are in South Polloy that focus more, morely on South Polloy and what's happening, and they, they were, give you a notice on what's going on, all that there, but some of these websites have turned into a very critical, which we expect in politics, we all expect to be criticized, but, uh, which we expect, and some of these have turned down, downright bullying, criticism is expected, but bullying is not. A lot of these criticism comes from ex-employees and their friends that were affected by South Polloy signing a contract with town of Lloyd Fire Department. Some of the criticism comes from ex-employees that quit or have been fired, or those that expect interest in running for office. Almost all the previous fire department, this is just a note, almost all the previous fire department employees had other jobs, and this was their second job, was working here in South Polloy whenever they wanted to, but we, we respect them, and if we'd have had 30 there or 20 there forever, we had never changed anything. The last year, the town of Lloyd has provided ambulance service to South Polloy seven days a week, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, with fully, fully qualified employees, ambulance amounts to about 90% of all calls. Prior to town of Lloyd contracting, signing the previous year, South Polloy was not protected seven, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, 355, 65 days a year. There was numerous times where no one was at the station, and there was times when there was only one person, which means no ambulance or fire suppression service. Other times, there was people there that were, had no one that could drive a fire truck, we had no one that was certified to hand out medicine, uh, or a combination thereof. The National Response Guidelines, uh, nation calls for five minutes and 20 seconds, and 80, 80 seconds of that is turnout, get, get going and get to your, uh, call. As fire department suppression response, at, at, um, a portion of that time last year, we spent with, uh, this last year with town of Lloyd, we had two ambulances with fully staffed all the time, three people were there most, some of the time, not all the time, and, um, at, uh, at South Polloy, but we were covered 100% of the time by town of Lloyd and had two fire stations, there were six fire stations in Polloy, two at town of Lloyd, or five, rather, and three, uh, Polloy fire stations, and one, two of Polloy fire stations, one's one mile away, one's eight tenths of a mile away, the two town of Lloyd fire stations are four miles and 3.8 miles. So response times, our response time for town of Lloyd are comparable to the departments in our area. Example, Rockton Fire District has 54 square miles of their fire district, South Polloy is 6.1 square miles. The fire station in Rockton is located at the northern point of their, their district. If they get a call to, let's say Sherlin, they get seven miles, that's, that's nine miles to get there, that's nine minutes to get there, at least nine minutes and 30 seconds, and if they go, well.
You can do it in your report, too, just mark where you left off and do it in your report.
All right, and approval of the minutes of the council meeting held, uh, July 21st, 2025, get a motion, please?
Motion. Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody pulled, no. Finance, approval of claims paid July 19th, August 1st, 2025, for the amount of?
Motion.
Tracy?
Mr. Rayland.
Yes.
Mr. Hickerson.
Yes.
Mr. Morris.
Yes.
Mr. Perez.
Yes.
Yes, attorney report.
No report.
No report. City report, administrator report?
I just have two quick things, Mayor, the greater good, um, the first is, I want to not steal Chief's thunder, but remind everyone that tomorrow night is National Night Out, so, uh, if you haven't found that event, Chief has flyers, I think there's some on the wall, um, it's out on Facebook and our webpage, but please participate in that, it's always a really great, real good event, and, uh, Chief and his team have put a whole lot of effort into gathering goodies for our children, so please bring your kids and enjoy that event. And then the other item I wanted to just mention quickly is, um, we had a huge response from our IDNR fishing event, um, they honestly claimed that it was the best event that they had this summer, the most well received, uh, great attendance, great weather, and just really appreciative crowd, so I wanna thank the public for coming out strong and doing that, and I think Shawna is actually working on a repeat event even still this summer, so stay tuned, and we'll try to get another one of those out in books. How does Matt, Chief Turner has our police department quarterly report?
Okay, thank you. I wish you all have a happy quarter, and I start off with a statistical overview that, um, because we'll get this quarter compared to the last quarter and last year during the same time, so our calls per service, we had 2,008 calls per service this quarter, which is up 4% from last quarter, down 6% last year, traffic crashes, uh, we had 27 compared to 26, uh, last quarter. City organs violations, we issued 20 versus 79 last quarter, uh, that was a 74% drop, and that's really others may be treated, uh, ID and parking organs, we're merely trying to warn people, educate them, we have more signs out, they're easier to read, uh, we've had it on social media, spending, uh, defending our sewer buildings, so we're really trying to get the word out before we start deciding for the ID and parking, but, um, pretty soon that time will come, we'll, we won't have a choice. Criminal arrests, uh, we're up 47% from last quarter, and up 44% from last year, traffic tickets, um, up 16% and up 39% from last year. Because you know, we do a lot of training, some of it's mandated, and some of it, uh, is just what we call specialty training. Um, department-wide, we all did firearms qualifications, and we worked with legal updates online. We also had 12 specialty trainings, and I'm not gonna read them all, because you have the prime view, but I'll just highlight a few of them. Uh, Detective Sergeant Reed and Sergeant Oden attended the Tony King LaLona Drug and Officers Association training. Officer West attended criminal investigation for new detectives, Officer Ramirez attended crisis intervention and disturbance calls, Officer Billings attended the enhanced Alice instructor, and Sergeant Keel attended patrol rifle instructor, and lastly, Officer Tony attended vehicle post quarter battle 1 and 2. So we train a lot, we train often. Okay? The next set of sheets are Tony King's graphs that just outline the, uh, statistics that we just went over, and I'll get to the last page, miscellaneous events and updates. So the last quarter, we had 19 active and compliant sex offenders in South Polloy, we did arrest one for being non-compliant. Kim stays very busy with, uh, lawyer requests, she did 34, uh, requests, which resulted in 302 pages and took over 10 hours to do that. Sergeant Moniel, Officer West, uh, conducted the third round of tobacco compliance checks along with this, uh, one of their common health department, this round, all businesses were in compliance. We had one vehicle seizure, it's a 2016 Chevy Malibu, um, that driver was cited for aggravated fleeing, reckless driving, illegal transportation of alcohol by driver, and that is pending in the court. Lieutenant Ferguson, he uses ICAC, uh, human blood, sedative, crying against children, task force, that he's on, he did a two-step research warrants that led to arrest for possession of child property. We thanked our dispatchers and provided them with treats during National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. I attended the Moa Chief Conference in Nickenshire. Sergeant Keel was recognized by the Polloy Breakfast Optimist Pub for his outstanding work. Um, I had distinguished guests at, at, at the Polloy, for the, uh, Police Memorial Breakfast during National Police Week at the Hard Rock Casino. Administrative record secretary, Maki, about three years, spoke to students at Louisville Community School about social media awareness, they, uh, really enjoyed their presentations out there, and they asked them to go back each quarter, which is very nice. We were ready and available for the veterans signed off and returned, um, this year's a little different than it come through South Polloy, they just kinda bypassed us on the interstate, so there was really little involvement with our department, but we were ready for any assistance that was needed. Everything went well for the Moora, they prayed, we didn't have any issues. I applied for and received a $2,000 Walmart Spark Grant, the funds will go towards National Night Out, which is tomorrow, and Shop With A Badge, which is later this year. I also applied for a $60,000 organized retail crime grant, that's pending. We had an encouragement installed in the lobby area of the police department, um, Sonia and I attended a, a event in Polloy called the Night 2025, where they had a lot of, um, leadership, uh, speakers. We have our new, um, actual bodywork cameras, and they're in service, they're, they're working fantastic, um, our, our three instructors are getting trained under tasers, and then they'll let off the rest of the department, so they'll be coming soon. And Sergeant Roberbucker tended to keep ordering along a beautiful medication drop-off at the fire department for real issues, um, they bring back a lot of medication that we're, we're sending off. And as Tony said, uh, tomorrow's National Night Out, this is a wonderful event, um, it's really to build community relationships with the police department, however, we invite all departments and staff to come in the city, um, it's free for all citizens, um, we provide free food and drink, we have, you know, brats, hot dogs, pizza, chips, cookies, pot water, um, and we, we give away a lot of free prizes, kids can win, win backpacks filled with school supplies, bicycles, we, you know, we give out family games and, and various items, so it's a really nice event, it's tomorrow at the American Union from 5:00 to 7:30, so we hope you all can make it, and that's American work.
Questions?
Are we able to move, uh, new business swearing in ahead of the correspondence by chance? Is that an option?
We get to it, yeah, we can if you want to, that. Um, all right, now I'm gonna, I'll pause my mayor report, I'm gonna finish what I wrote down there. Uh, and for those that were asking for me to resign or quit, or whatever, um, there's not a chance of that happening. I was elected three times to South Polloy, and it never, South Polloy has never been in better shape financially or infrastructure-wise, and we have many great projects in our future. And if you are ever elected to sit up here in one of these seats, you will begin for a rude awakening, you'll find out that there is more to run in a city than sitting in front of your computer or on your phone, you will also find out that there is more than just a fire department, there's four other departments, 40 employees, and $90 million budget with a lot of tough decisions to make for all the 7, 800 residents, not just the 300 or 400 that are your close friends. There's been a numerous FOI requests, some understandable, but some of them frivolous and, but they all take time from our staff and legal department, and away, and it take a lot, and it costs a lot of money. One, one FOI request took over 30 hours for a person, for our, uh, for our staff to, to answer, and, uh, but it's, I mean, you can make them, I'm just saying, this is what happens, this costs a lot of money, costs a lot of time, and I believe that most of those that are doing all these criticizing towards us are, are more worried about who's in the truck than whether if they're qualified personnel, and staffing has become a problem for many years and will continue in the future, and you will see that by, that's all I got for there. Um, so we'll move on to, uh, you wanna move that?
I think we should do swearing in first.
Yep.
Wanna do that? Okay, let's, uh, motion to, motion to move, move, uh, item D A ahead of, uh, correspondence.
So, say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Chief, it's all yours.
I'm, uh, happy to introduce Ezekiel Kaiser, he's our 13th officer, um, as you know, we're, um, a lot of 14, so we're gonna hire one more after Zeke, but, uh, Zeke's 25, he lives in Winnebago County, so it's nice to have local guys apply and they get through our, our process, um, he was previously a security guard at Hard Rock Casino, um, his next steps will be to, um, go to the Sauk Island Community Council for 16 weeks, after that, come back and do field training with us for, um, a minimum of 14 weeks, and, uh, he'll be on solo patrol, so we're very happy to have.
Raise your right hand, repeat everything. I, Ezekiel Kaiser.
I, Ezekiel Kaiser.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Code of Ordinances.
The Code of Ordinances.
Of the city of South Polloy.
Of the city of South Polloy.
The rules and regulations.
The rules and regulations.
Practices and procedures.
Practices and procedures.
Of the South Polloy Police Department.
Of the South Polloy Police Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
Of the city of South Polloy.
Of the city of South Polloy.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Yeah, you guys can come up and take pictures, as he come here, but having a captain or whatever, or a chief, rather?
Children up there.
I wanna get in.
You already moved out the way.
No, you're fine, I'll just get out of the way.
Thank you. Here we go, three, two, one. Gotcha. Anybody else wanna get in with them? Big smiles, three, two, one. Gotcha. You guys know how to make this train move, I love it. Here we go, three, two, one. Perfect. Yeah, you gotta get up there. All right, here we go, three, two, one. Gotcha.
All right, we got one more.
We're here. All right, nice and tight, here we go, three, two, one.
Congratulations, I see.
Thank you.
You guys got cake next door or something?
They got some.
Where are they going?
Right now, front.
They're going out the front door.
All right, moving on here, uh, moving on, of course.
Where are they going? They're going out the front door. All right. Moving on here, moving on of correspondence, report and presentation of the Fire Department study by the Illinois Fire Chiefs Association. You guys wanna come up here by the podium there and give your, whatever you want to say or do?
Not going to the podium just for him because Chief Markowski is in the majority of the speaking. My name's Ray Kay. I am the Director of Research and Consulting, Illinois Fire Chiefs. I'm a retired fire chief, about forty years in the fire service. I'm kind of heading up the project overall, but working together on the report. Chief Markowski's gonna give more details on the report. Thing I want to say is we very much appreciate South Beloit giving us the opportunity to work on the project. It's a big deal in the fire service about staffing right now nationally. So we got the opportunity to work on it here and present our findings. Thank you for that opportunity.
Chief, let me, let me tell everybody ahead of time. You are just gonna give your report. It's not a question and answer period for anybody, so if the council wants to ask something, that's one thing, but it's not an open discussion. So go ahead, Chief. Thanks.
Thank you guys for doing this. Thank you. My name is Adam Markowski. As Chief Kay had mentioned, I too have forty years in the fire service, retired as a fire chief. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to do this report on behalf of the Illinois Fire Chiefs Association. I think it's key that we kind of go through a couple of things. Obviously, the report is very, you know, has a very detailed, has a lot more information than what we're gonna cover here tonight. It's my understanding you've all had a copy of the report, so I'm just gonna hit the highlights or hit some of the considerations as we move forward or recommendations. The Illinois Fire Chiefs was hired to, in a two-phase project. The first phase was to review the intergovernmental agreement between the Town of Beloit and the city of South Beloit. That process was to just make sure that everything was being done and was being executed completely. And to make any recommendations for future considerations. Phase two was to look and review what the history was that led up to this staffing model and then make recommendations for the future moving forward. And so that's what we set out to do. Before we start though, there's a couple of key things that I think that is really important to understand. Is you, the city of South Beloit, is not alone when it comes to staffing shortages. This is a nationwide problem, and it has existed now for quite some time, right? It's not exclusive to just Illinois. It's not exclusive to Wisconsin. This is a nationwide process. A lot of that that's led up to this is that the fire service used to be made up of people who would just come and hired onto a fire department, and you were a volunteer. You would just come and you'd just hop on a truck and you would go and you'd answer those calls. That day does not exist today in any of the areas around here. And it doesn't exist today for a very valid reason. Too many people were hurt and killed, and I'm talking about firefighters. So today, you have requirements in terms of levels of education, certifications that you must have before you just hop on a truck and go out to a call. This also pertains to the medical side of that. You just can't go there and pretend you know something about saving someone's life. These requirements are very timely. Takes a lot of education, a lot of continuing education to be able to get those certifications and maintain them. That has resulted in a lot of people having undue pressures put onto their lives. Because remember, this isn't their careers. These were their part-time jobs or volunteer positions. And because of that, that stress, that strain of those commitments is part of the process which led to the shortage of firefighters. So as we look at that, again, I say what you're experiencing is no different than many other fire departments throughout this country. Many fire departments have gone under. They don't exist today. They literally have given it up. They couldn't get the people. So you're to be commended for at least trying to do something through this process and work through it. It's my understanding in twenty sixteen through the Mid-America Report, we've read that report, and I see in there that there was some future considerations in that report too. So should you have problems with staffing in the future, that you were to reach out and specifically address the city of Beloit, Harlem Roscoe, and private entities. And so the city did do those things. You did your due diligence. You followed up on that report that was adopted in twenty sixteen from the Mid-America Report. You did reach out to those communities and try to get, is there any assistance we can get? Unfortunately, that did not prove to be beneficial, except for in the case of the Town of Beloit. They were the only ones that would be willing to be able to help out with the staffing, and this is something that you already know. So as we move forward here and we look at the Phase One process of reviewing the IGA. We looked at the IGA. We read it very in-depth, and we asked a lot of questions for Chief Peace to follow through on it as well. To ensure that all of the components of the IGA were being completed, not just on the receiving side, but also on the giving side. Because that's what's good. An IGA is an intergovernmental agreement where two sides participate. We want to make sure that both sides were equally participating in what they were initially obligated to do. We did find in the IGA that the staffing component was gray. It was gray as in two or three people per day. But because they do have two people per day, they are in compliance with the IGA. I know it's the intent for the Chief Peace to be able to have three people there per day. We, that is Ray and I, did an extensive interview with Chief Peace, and we found that what he has for the future in terms of providing to the, to the city of South Beloit has a lot of merit. It has a lot of merit. We detailed that in our report. Some of the things that also that we had to talk about in there in our report is we gave you an example of what would be a good, better, best approach to a staff in the fire station. And right now, we're sitting here with the opportunity to be able to enhance on that. So that's, again, we outlined it in the report. We think that eventually, and Chief Peace agrees with us, that a staff ALS engine would probably be better than a staff ALS ambulance. It has versatility. We talked about that in the report, how it could be, benefit the community better in terms of responses. We detailed what the pros and cons of that were in the report. That, again, would require the full staffing twenty-four hours a day then in order to do that, which, again, the IGA does not call for, three people every day. We also talked about with Chief Peace implementing a six-fire station concept. Now, this is something that he expressed to us and he outlined for us, a six-fire station concept, which we detailed in the report. Which would have the three fire stations from the city of Beloit, the two fire stations from the Town of Beloit, and the one fire station from South Beloit. Participating as though they're one fire station or one fire department. And what you get then in a response like that is you get the ability to be able to utilize them all. So if the South Beloit had a call going on and they weren't available, you had an automatic response coming in from the two other, from the five other fire stations to come and fulfill those, the next calls. Or in the case of a structured fire, it's very difficult to be able to get what we would call maybe a full assignment, a two-engines, a truck, a battalion chief, an ambulance, and all of that. It's very hard to do that when you're only a single-fire station company. So with the six-station model, that has that opportunity to be able to present a much more robust response on that initial response. We think it has a lot of merit. Also, in the intergovernmental agreement, we encourage you, as it comes nearing the end, that you continue to evaluate both the positives and the negatives that you've experienced during this time. And then you'd be able to look at that and say, okay, like anything, you do a risk-benefit analysis. What worked, what didn't work? Maybe there were some things that didn't work, but Kim, we can work on that, so we can go back on the revision and address those issues. Also, we would encourage you that if by chance you did want to look at other staffing models at the time. We do, we do know now that after we met with some other fire chiefs, that Harlem Roscoe would be interested in talking with the city of South Beloit. Should that be down the road? We know that some of the other private paramedic services would be interested in that. Should that be a direction down the road? That wasn't true back when you initially had that happen, when you first started putting this together, but things change. So that was some of the key things on the IGA. And so we also wanted to look at some of the other effects that happened here. We looked at the ISO rating for the city, which is a four. And we recognized that it'd be very difficult to continue to maintain that four with just a limited staffing in the fire station. However, we believe that if a six-station model was implemented, it would actually, that robust response would not only support that four, it may even have the ability to be able to improve on it. Again, that would be down the road. So watching the ISO components is something that would be key for you as well as you move down the road. Some of the other considerations that we had was, we wanted to make sure that we noted that the city is still responsible for having policies, procedures, and doing record keeping. And I understand that they have policies and procedures, but as we move forward, even though you've contracted out for personnel, you have a duty to be able to maintain that, right? And that typically also requires somebody in-house to watch over the records and make sure things are updated. So that is a recommendation as well too. Even though the Town of Beloit has the responsibility to provide staffing, the IGA does not have anything in there where they have to provide or maintain your policies, procedures, or your records. So we think that that's important, that the city continues to maintain those as you move forward. The other thing that we noted was in there, currently, the city is operating, the fire department's operating on a channel that's shared with the neighboring departments in Illinois. If, in fact, this six-station model was to be implemented, it would be most effective if you were all on the same fire frequency. And it's a safety issue and it's a timely. So if you're all operating on the same channel, you can hear what the response is, you can hear who's going, you can be able to communicate directly with somebody and know if there's a fire or if there's a condition or whatever that was warranted. So that would be a consideration for down the road. If you're looking for improving service, and that's what this is all about, is that you would then evaluate whether or not you should be on the same fire frequency. And there's a process in which to do that, right? Also, there's the PSAP, the point of answering all of the nine-one-one calls. That's a lot stickier. However, that too is amount of time, time and money. So you're looking at being able to, if you answered the nine-one-one call from a dispatch center and then it gets transferred over to somewhere in Beloit, South Town of Beloit, or whatever the case may be, you've got to get that call over where it's gonna get dispatched. That takes time. And so you have to evaluate whether or not it would be cost-efficient for you to move your answering point from one spot to the next. That in itself probably is a, is a study in itself, because it's really expensive. Illinois put forth through their legislation a lot of consolidation efforts for reducing the amount of PSAPs. And because of that, they offered financial incentives. I don't know what your financial incentives would be with your current dispatch center, but again, you want to look at that and make sure you're not giving up anything before you move on. So that was a down and dirty quick. It's my understanding you've all read the report. If you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Like I said, I talked to you guys earlier before. I said, we need, we didn't get the report till Friday night, you know? And someone was saying, get it till Saturday and what have you. And so we really haven't had a time to look through it where, you know, now after listening to you and that, we can all kind of get a better idea of what the report's all about, you know what I mean? It's my part anyway. I was on the road a lot this weekend, so I didn't, I read it Friday night and I read it Sunday a little bit, but...
I just have one, one question. And I think probably the crux of the whole problem for everybody nationwide. What have you seen as far as recruiting effort that actually works to get people to come in the door, get people to retain? Why are some departments more successful at retaining, and why are some failing? Are you able to explain?
Salary, benefits, and more calls. So, you know, typically, the younger firefighter that's coming into the business today is looking for money, salary. They're looking for time off. They're looking for more calls. They're looking for benefits. And in Illinois, your pensions are mobile. You can move from one department to the next. And therefore, it doesn't matter. They're just gonna go with whatever they want to do now, whatever's closest to their home. There's a whole host of reasons why a firefighter may want to go to Department A from Department B. But typically, it has to do with money, has to do with how busy they are. I mean, it could be as much as how much time do I have to spend on the ambulance? There's a whole host of things in there, and it really comes down to that individual, what's gonna best benefit them as a whole? And so there isn't a, there isn't a black and white answer for what it is. I just threw out six things that could influence why a individual person would move from A to B.
Right.
But again, pension's portable, so it doesn't matter if they go to A to B and C to D. If their job hopping to be a better themselves or do whatever they are for their personal gain, their pension comes along with them.
All right. Follow-up question. We're a smaller department. There's not a lot of different areas of specialty, right? I'm very limited on my, on my fire department knowledge, okay? Chief, this is probably some questions that you would probably do a better job of answering, but, you know, I understand there's water rescue, there's, you know, high rides, rescue, all of those things. Obviously, that's not a huge requirement here. But when you're finding people that are trying to find people coming out of college, are they more interested in, I mean, we mentioned the types of calls. Is that probably one of the bigger issues that we might face later on down the line? If we can offer the same salary that Rockford offers, for instance, right? They're gonna have more opportunity to grow in that department versus us, the way I would see it coming in. Is that fair assessment?
Let me see if I make sure I have the question.
Can I answer that for him?
All right.
At one time, our department had all of those, water rescue, technical rescue. We had high angle, low angle, trench rescue, building collapse rescue. We had no problem in getting people to fill those positions at that time. That's kind of like the police department and Amber Swat. You go open up these teams, you get these young guys, they want to get in. And we were joint technical rescue teams with like fifteen departments around us to share those, those personnel. So those are definitely something that will draw the people in. But it's a matter of getting the people in to fill these stuff. As we talked about earlier, about not having the third person in the station all the time, that's because we're having difficulty getting people hired. And that's with the prevailing union wages in this area.
Ten dollars a dollar bonus.
We talk about the good, good program, the better program, and the best program. The best program is having the ambulance and the engine staff. That's fifteen people. That's not county manager. That's fifteen personnel firefighters just man daily. That's without vacation schedules and anything. That's, that's without vacation schedules and anything else figured in here. That's fifteen people, okay? That is a tremendous amount of money on a community this size. Now, if we can work with that three people, having the nine staff, which is what we're trying to accomplish now, where we can have that engine, paramedic engine, then we're going to be able to meet the needs of this community. And that's the direction we're trying to work. I spent forty-four years on the fire department in the city. When I left here, we had four full-time people and thirty-two paid on call. But it was a problem that I had been preaching from day one I got out of the department, is that we had to look at many issues because it was dying across the country thirty years ago. It's been a steady decline. And this isn't something we're trying to do to save the city money, to get rid of something we didn't like. It's a problem we got dropped in our lap, and we're trying to find the best solution.
The, so a couple of follow-ups also on your, on your question there, sir. You talk about the different disciplines, and I talked about the, the strain on the individual part-time volunteer firefighters. Each one of those disciplines now require a new state certification. It requires more time, more schooling, hard to maintain. So many years ago, back in the late sixties, there was a program that was put together out of Elk Grove, Arlington Heights, and Mount Ross. It's called the Mutulate Box Alarm System. That system has evolved so that it's almost every fire department in Illinois, and I know on the southern border, all, all of the southern border of Wisconsin is all part of the MABUS agreement. So when it comes to those specialty teams, dives, technical rescues, high-rise rescues, hazmat, you now rely on MABUS. You, each department doesn't have to have their own team. It's cost in effect, you just can't do it. You can have people, but you just can't have your own teams. Just way too expensive. That philosophy also held true with the cities or villages, fire protection districts, all have the ability to pay. So what it comes down to is that if you have a very rich community with a large tax base, you have the ability to pay for whatever you want. But in most cases, that's not true. So each, each government then has to be able to provide the best that they could do with their ability to pay. And that's where the good, better, best comes into play, right? I would, I, I, I don't doubt for a minute that if there was a bucket of money here that you all could spend, and endless money here, you'd have the best program for your department. However, that's not the case. It's not the case for most governments within the state and across this country. So that's, that's the big key thing in there, and that's why we rely on our neighbors through what's called automatic aid today. Different than mutule aid, automatic aid is where we have an agreement that says, hey, look, our staffing is restricted. So when we get those calls, those critical calls, can you provide us with another end? Can you bring us a truck? Can you bring us a battalion chief? So you bring in those help from those neighbors, and it's called automatic aid, right? In Chief P's six-station concept, that basically is what it is. It's an automatic aid process that brings in this robust full assignment of everything that you would need for a reported instruction firework, whatever the call may be. So it has a lot, a lot of potential, not just for South Beloit. Remember, this is also going to be beneficial for the city and the town of Beloit as well.
I got a question that, if this, you know, let's say this doesn't work, you know? Let's say Town of Beloit says, we're done with you. What happens then? But I mean, what happens to us as we move forward? I mean, Roscoe, like, I know you, I read in there, Roscoe mentioned, oh, we'd like to talk to the South Beloit. They didn't want to talk to us before. Rockton didn't want to talk to us before.
Yes, sir.
And Town of Beloit didn't want to talk to us before. I mean, if it wasn't for them, well, you know, I mean, so, I mean, there's the city. We got to have something to fall back on or something to, I mean, I like the six-station thing because there's a lot of equipment, but, I mean, we got numerous amounts of equipment, but this, this question is all.
Yes, it's a very good question, and we do address that in the report for future considerations. Obviously, you're, you're obligated in the IGA right now. As, as it's coming near its completion, you can look and say, is this working or is this not? What we have identified and confirmed is that although Harlem Roscoe could not help you out when you first initially talked to them, that was because they were going through the same staffing trouble that you were going through. And they were going from a part-time model to a fully paid career model. And because of that, they just said, man, we got so much going on. We're trying to hire our own people, not a good time to come knock on our door. The chief now says that they'd be happy to talk to you in the future, now that they've got, I think they've got up to fifteen people per day is their goal over there. Now, let me just back this up a little bit, too, because Chief P has also told us that he is now authorized budgetarily to go to ten personnel per day, where currently it's at seven. So again, he's got a challenge, like every other fire department out there, to go hire people. But he has the authority to go hire more people so that he could fulfill having all these stations staffed again.
Thank you.
I just want to say one thing. Harlem Roscoe, I think it's, I think it's incredibly interesting that they're now wanting to talk. I think during that first round, correct me if I'm wrong, when we were talking with them, they wanted to take the name South Beloit off the side of the building. They wanted to take the name South Beloit off the side of trucks, off the ambulance. Everything was going to be theirs. It, it, it's incredibly interesting to me now that we found a partner that was willing to work with us, that now they want to try to help. Endlessly interesting, and thank you for the offer, Harlem Roscoe.
What your experience, though, is this issue here with the staffing, as long as you own a fire department, you're going to have this issue. The only way to walk away from this is to leave the fire department business. And that would have somebody, Rockton, Harlem Roscoe, come in and take you, take over the whole area as their fire protection district. Now, there's pros and cons to that. For a council, you never have to have anybody complaining about the fire department anymore. You go, go over there, they're the ones in charge. So there's a positive to that. The negative part about that is you lose all your home feelings about your fire department, your responses, and everything else. So it's tough, you're in a hard position as a board because you have a fire department, you're trying to staff it, and, and it's just very difficult. So again, the only way to make this ever go away, so it never comes before this council again, is get rid of the fire department.
That was one of our decisions to go with that. I mean, we want, and you, I mean, I know, questions I asked, I read in there. I knew the answer before I asked you, but I like.
Before I say get rid of the fire department, let me just say that that's difficult because the fire protection district has a separate tax rate.
I know.
And I can assure you, it's much higher.
High considerably higher.
Considerably higher than what you allocate for fire protection.
They want, if they want a fire truck, they just tell them, hey, we need a fire truck. I know, Rock, that's what, I mean, they, they have some pushback.
I remember, too, one, one last point I wanted to make. They also weren't going to put somebody in our fire department itself.
Yeah, right, that was going to shut down, I know. But, yeah.
Anyways, future, you asked about future consideration. We also noted that AMR has been providing paramedics, firefighter paramedics in Rockton. The chief from Rockton says he doesn't have a turnover in personnel, he's got no problems with it. So that's always a possibility. I don't know if you talked to AMR initially, so that might be a, a.
We, we did it. At the time, they weren't able to consider us because they were having trouble fulfilling their contracts already because of MABUS. So it's, even in, even in the privates, it's an issue.
And, and we're doing a report right now for, for, I can't name the, the name of the town, but who literally is worried about if their private ambulance company can't provide the people, what are we going to do? So that question is around everywhere. This is, you are not unique, you're not unique.
So as I went through the report, as you talk about the good, the better, the best, you know, and you talk about ideally, you know, if the P's six-station model becomes a provision, you know, I guess I'm, you know, going back to what we've been through. We were one station. I'm not familiar with all the terms, but it's called automatic aid and stuff like that, you know? When, when typically, when we would put out a call for help, it was Harlem Roscoe or Rockton. So, you know, so then we are now, what I would say, three stations. Not exactly, but there's this kind of the layman's terms of how you break it down, whereas, you know, if we can do what Beloit's trying to do, it would be six stations.
Yeah, and let me make sure I'm clear on this. So it'd be six stations for your response model, but that automatic aid still could be utilized in Rockton and Harlem Roscoe. So if it's on this side, you know, in the, in the South Beloit area, that doesn't necessarily mean you're getting all of those stations from the north. You're, you're getting the closest, being able to come in and fulfill that. But in either case, you're using those six stations as your normal response entity, but you can still use automatic aid.
So again, it's, it's all for one and one for all, trying to help each other out.
Anybody else? No, wait, but that's not a question and answer period.
Well, I don't have a question, I was just going to say, if pensions are mobile, one had made more sense.
No, ma'am, ma'am. No, you're out of order, you're out of order, don't do that.
I'm just.
This is our meeting, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
If you all have any questions from either Chief K or myself, you know, we're available. Thank you again for this, I appreciate the effort.
Chief Don, Ray, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we went through new business, we. Thank you.
Respectfully.
Thank you. Discuss, approve ordinance 2848, amend in chapter eighteen, business by Article 12 Residential Rental Property Regulation. Wait a minute, I'd come down here. Yeah, B. Discuss, approve motion to reconsider ordinance 2848, amend in chapter eighteen, business by adding Article 12 Residential Rental Property Regulation. Motion.
Motion. I'm bringing this up to be reconsidered because there is more information, to my understanding, that should be shared. I'd like the city staff to have that opportunity to, to give that information to us. That's why I'm asking for the reconsideration. I'm not saying my vote, vote is changing, in fact, probably won't. But I want to give city staff the opportunity to give more information on this.
Do we have a, do we have to vote on that?
No.
No.
No, we have to vote on the motion to reconsider.
Tracy. Do you hear that, Tracy?
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Hickerson?
No.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Prentice?
No.
Yes. Discuss, approve ordinance 2848, amend in chapter eighteen, business by Article 12 Residential Rental Property Regulation. Get a motion, please.
I make a motion to lay this over until the first meeting in October.
Get a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, Tracy.
Mr. Hickerson?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Prentice?
No.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Yes. Discuss, approve ordinance 2859, amend in various sections of chapter 118, zoning regarding section two definitions and amendment, amend the term guest houses in section sixteen to amend off-street parking and loading. Motion, please.
I'll move. Second.
Who's got this? Shawna?
So this is a text amendment adding the guest house in definition into the ordinance along with the parking regulations for that, that definition in certain zoning districts in the ordinance.
Anybody else? Tracy, please.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Prentice?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Hickerson?
Yes, five oh, no moves. Discuss, approve ordinance 2860, abating property taxes on approximately eighteen point three-three-five acres in real estate property generated located northeast corner of Illinois, Route seventy-five, Oakfield Parkway. Motion, please.
I'll move. Second.
Yeah, you go ahead.
Yeah, so this was an error that was made by the taxing collecting bodies that was supposed to elevate fifty percent of the property sales tax, property tax to a quick start. So basically, all three entities agreed to it. Hananiga and Prairie Hills sent it to their board, approved an ordinance, and it never got brought to the county. We did a development agreement carving out this fifty percent property tax payment for five years, but we never gave the ordinance. So with the juggle, we opted to, Aaron actually met in Deathville County, and we decided that the cleanest thing to do is to bring it back to each taxing collecting body, revise the ordinance to add the fifth year back into it because they will not be getting abated on their property tax for 2025 and extend that five-year period one year. So that's what this is. And I am personally, can deliver all three ordinances from all three taxing bodies to the county.
All right, anybody else? Tracy.
Mr. Prentice?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Prentice?
Yes, five oh. Okay, discuss, approve Resolution sixty-six thirty-one, approve professional service agreement proposal by Fairgram regarding Middle Road drainage improvement not to exceed twenty-two thousand, four hundred ninety dollars. Motion, please.
I'll move. Second.
Okay.
I can take this one before we all tell mayor. Also, this particular project is not time-sensitive, so if we decide that we have further questions, we will want to lay this over for our engineers to be here. Tyler and Brandon are both out of town this week, so we can certainly do that if needed, too. But basically, this has been a matter that for the last couple of years, we have known that there's a property on Middle Road that is being drastically impacted and kind of sits between two properties because of the stormwater retention and I will call it a core worksmanship of the original infrastructure that was put into place. So a couple of years ago, we actually brought this to Aaron, said we have two copies tonight, Aaron. But we brought this to our legal team, and basically, the consensus was a couple of years ago, we are maintaining these roads, we have basically inherited this infrastructure, whether we like the way that the work was done twenty years ago or not. So this is our infrastructure to repair. Steve's crew has been going out frequently to make repairs where a drainage pipe was put under Middle Road, and it's now collapsed and it continues to cause problems. But this mayor is a really good example of why we continue to harp to our community development team that our standards have raised and we have to hold people accountable for them. It just gets really difficult if we let developers off the hook in situations like this because here we are twenty years later fixing a matter that we feel like there's probably a better answer than just dropping a drywall into clear stormwater issue. So Steve, am I saying anything ordinary or something else?
Ends up worse on all neighbors' properties and everything else, and so that's why. It has to be done, that's all.
In fact, as you had a pretty, carved out, there are four different bullets breaking down the cost of this. I just buy it, Brandon, to not inspect any corners because it's infrastructure that we never inspected in the first place. I feel like we need to do a really thorough job of knowing what we've inherited on the Middle Road and how it would impact the rest of that neighborhood. So that's why this engineering project is a little pricey. But, you know, there it is, and if, if there's any further questions, that's about the extent of my.
Anybody else? Motion, or Tracy, please.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Hickerson?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Prentice?
Yes.
Yes, prove, offer to purchase nine-ten Ingersoll Place in amount of five, five hundred dollars. Motion, please.
And this one, mayor?
Has to be a three-quarter vote. This is, this is just a property over by, by Ingersoll at the end there that, next to the Brydons property, and they, you can't build. to the Brydons property, and they, you can't build on it. It's flooded with paint. They just want to put a parking lot in there, which ain't going to hurt a thing.
Got a motion? Give a second.
Second. Anybody else? Tracy, please.
Mr. Adelman?
Yes.
Mr. Hickerson?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Prentis?
Yes.
Yes. Discuss regarding a proposed sewer increase. Motion. Oh, we just discussed it. Go ahead. Who wants to talk about this?
Yes, well, mayor, the request here is just to get some feedback from the council on how to draft the ordinance so that our legal team can do so. We know that unfortunately, we do have to add a sewer rate increase. There are a couple of questions that we need to get clarity on. One, are we going to include class A sludge? Yes or no? And then, two, do we want to have a large increase upfront, or are we looking to add it on to a long-term incremental increases like we did last time? The only caution is that, you know, we, we did, how many years were the increases? I think we put it on like a 20-year map, and now we're only five years into that and heading to increase them again. If we add another 20-year map five years from now, we're going to be looking at our race again, and we're just going to continue to lay that on. So, it's not fun. I know this is a really difficult topic to talk about with the last opening fees, but we do need to prepare an ordinance, and we're just trying to save the effort and try to get a little bit of feedback for our legal team to be able to provide the best for the council.
I see the rate increases are $3 every year for the next five years.
Quarterly, we manually make those adjustments. That's right. So, every quarter, people see a few pennies of increase for the next 20 years.
But otherwise, you'd have to raise it 10 bucks, sorry, to begin with? Is that percentage-wise, or is that just 10 bucks?
We do have the, it's about a 30% increase, depending on which one we pick. If we include a class A sludge or if we don't, I think it goes from a 28 to a 34% increase. So, we can provide a couple of options. I just, in order to go after the INPA funding, the low-interest loans, we have to have a sewer rate increase in order to get there. So, we can create an ordinance and then get feedback and then act back and tweak the ordinance.
I think obviously, a 30% increase upfront is not an option.
20 years, is it?
20 years, I think it's too long. Is it the recommendation from Fairgram, five years?
They gave us multiple, and they gave us the chart to manipulate these. Their recommendation on five years was to readdress our rates every five years because the cost of doing everything goes up.
I agree, Ron. I think 20 years is a long time. We're in this situation because prior councils kicked it down the street and didn't fix it. So, now we have to fix something that would, should have been fixed 20 years ago. So, it sucks. We all know that, but 20 years is way too long.
Would you like to see a five-year and a 10-year or something like that?
Sure.
Okay.
I'd like to see a couple of options, but 20 is 20.
Five, seven, 10. The problem is, they sent the, they kicked the sewer department, sewer down the road. That was, was kicked down the road for 30 years. And now, this is, this is just infrastructure fixing, where we need to fix the pump station from the other side of the river underneath this side. And this is something like, you know, I hate to use this analogy, analogy, but it's kind of like, you buy a house and you pay for your house. Even though you're paying for it every month, you might have put a roof on it, and you got all of a sudden have to pay another $15,000 to put a roof on it, and so that just costs you more money, you know? But I mean, it's something that we have to do because the whole west side is, relies on that station over there on the South Bluff, and that's what it's going to cost. I mean, I don't know. I think five and 10 years, we're going to have to look at the costs, because it's, some people can't afford it, and I know that.
We will condense it into a five, seven, and 10-year, and you want to see it with and without the class A sludge, or do we have a...
With and without. With and without, right.
You got it. Thank you, mayor.
How much money can they make on that cat class A sludge in a year?
If Jeff was here, he'd answer the question.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I didn't know if anybody knew that offhand. I mean, if it was paying us...
I think it can be profitable from the conversations I had with them, but I can't...
Well, don't they haul it away now?
Right now, somebody hauls it.
They did talk about this in our presentation. Basically, it comes down to, mayor, the regulations on this sludge at the time. So, if the EPA continues to make it more and more difficult to deem it class A sludge by, you know, lowering the limits of phosphate or lowering the limits of certain things that we have to treat, that matters, and also if we have farmers that are willing to take the class A sludge at that current state. But, yeah, it does have the potential to make money, but it becomes more and more difficult to meet the requirements.
All right. So, where does...
I'll provide you both. So, I'll provide you three different options, with and without.
With and without, okay.
And we'll draft an ordinance. We'll come up with how we draft the ordinance, and it can be amended on the floor.
All right. Discuss regarding that 1% grocery sales tax. One thing about this grocery sales tax that I found out today, sitting in on a meeting, was we already have it.
Correct. The state and Governor Pritzer changed it so that it goes away on January 1st to 2026.
Yeah, so it's either, we already have it, so we're not changing it. We're just voting to keep it, and we don't have a grocery store, per se, until like maybe the Woodmans comes in. But all it is, is a question whether to keep it or get rid of it. And if we get rid of it, like Don said at one time, that it was going to be 100,000 to 150,000 a year coming in, and plus be a bargaining chip with anybody that wants to come in to build a store or do whatever they want to be. But it's up to somebody else. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Yeah, mayor, we were just looking for kind of a call sign. We didn't want to put it on the agenda if no one supported it, but if it seems like there's some support, then we will draft an ordinance and we'll put it on the next amendment.
I'd like to see some figures on what, what, how much we lose on the deal or how much we make on the deal, depending on which way we go with that.
But, but the main thing is that I found in this meeting, we were talking about it, was if you don't keep it now, you can't get it back. You got to go to a referendum to get it back.
No, there, there is not a time limit on this ordinance. It's, if you don't implement the ordinance by October 1st, you lose out on the taxes come January, and it's on like a six-month cycle. So, if you don't do it by October 1st, you have to do it before the deadline to start July 1st.
So, you don't need a referendum?
No.
Where do we get that?
It would be by ordinance, too.
Is it originally going to require a referendum if you didn't do it by October 1st?
I don't know if it was, that was a proposal that never made it in by the General Assembly, but I've heard that some people may have heard that. I don't know where that misinformation came from.
Well, we should find that out. We should find that out.
It's not, it's not in the information that's in our packet.
That's what I'm saying.
The attorney's correct. I mean, what's in our packet.
So, it, the statute reads that one, as the statute is written, an ordinance will, will pass the tax. You do not need a referendum. It just depends on when you pass the ordinance and when the tax can be implemented.
So, in other words, let me get this right. If we don't, if we vote it down, let's say we vote it down, come January 1st, then there's no 1% tax.
Correct.
And then, let's say July comes around, we can say, "Okay, we want, vote it in and you get a 1% tax."
I believe the deadline to implement in July is April 1st. I can get you that deadline if you don't want to pass it this fall. Okay.
Well, we already have it, so that's what I'm looking at and thinking. Well, I didn't know we had a 1% tax on...
Well, it was a state. It was a state tax.
Right. Run by the state.
Yeah. So, I'd like to, I'd like to see this continuing because it's political grandstanding is how, is why it's certainly not there, so.
I will get the numbers of what we currently get, and also, I will try to get you numbers. Like, I know we have some local communities, and Don has some of these numbers already prepared, but I didn't want to speak for him. But we can give you a estimate on that Rockford sample gets in $700,000 a year, but they have, you know, seven. So, you know, doing the math, does one major grocery store get you upwards of $100,000, likely, you know, something like that? I can give you some other numbers, but it is really hard in the Department of Revenue website to drill down on where the things come from. It depends on how people key it in and how those taxes get paid, so it really is cloudy. But we can still get you what we collect right now, which is not a lot. It's in the $20,000 to $30,000 range. I don't know if that's just bananas, a quick trick, or how we get that, but, you know, we can give you the numbers that we have. I think we'll propose it, and then we'll draft it, and we'll get the numbers that have to be passed.
And so, if we're, $20,000, I mean, instead of, we do want a grocery store in the city forever, and let that one sit, but it's only costing $20,000. It's a long, but I, I want to see.
I personally think we're sure that's a 1% kickback. I don't think it's going to work. They would say, "Hey, can you put this in?" And we'll take it as a kickback.
They're paying it wherever they go anyway. But I mean, yeah, we'll, I mean, that's something that we'll worry about when we get there, but we got to make a decision. Do we want to keep this or not? That's the only decision we got to make.
Okay, before we adjourn, can I ask an attorney question about us reopening the rental registry?
Sure. Go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I understand we're reopening it for information that we didn't know. I understand that we're laying it over to the county. At what point will we know why it's being reopened and what that information is?
I can speak to it, mayor. So, basically, our legal team and our community development team most strongly have this experience with code enforcement over the last 15 years and how we had faced around, you know, certain parties, and meanwhile, while we're spending all of our standing on one particular party, several others kind of pop up. So, I think some of it is, you know, we thought as we were trekking along several meetings with this being on an agenda, that my recruits along the way were gaining full board support. A big example of that is the crime free housing. We thought when we completely struck that, because it was the most critical piece, that it would be smooth sailing, and that we were kind of continuing to gain support as we made multiple amendments to our ask for rental registry. So, I think now that we kind of lost some support somewhere in there. I think the idea was, you know, Roxanne really felt strong with like, let's pile it all, put all of our bags together, let's present one clean package, and still know it's still a no. But we do have capabilities now with Tyler to kind of remind people annually with a permitting and renewal process that we think is streamlining the efforts, and we just don't want to have to go back to square one and try to come up with new tools and new ways to do the work. So, I think that's the short answer.
Are what we're going to see a version of what we've seen, or is this potentially a scrap it and do more of a woodstock method? I guess that's what I'm trying to understand from a legal perspective. Is this, I understand why the group wanted to reopen it. I don't think it looks good. So, my question is, you know, are we tweaking what we have, or are we scrapping it under this premise and possibly bringing it back up? And I still don't understand why.